Good morning. This meeting of the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment and Technology Committee is now called to order. I'm Danielle McCray, the councilwoman representing the 2nd District, also Chair of the Committee. In attendance, we have members of the Committee, Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District, Councilman John Bullock from the 9th District, Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the 10th District, and we also are joined by, from the Mayor's Office, Sophia Gabbion-Hewat and Nina Themelis. From the Council President's staff, we have Preston Lewis, who was here today, and also in attendance, we are welcoming Mr. Trey Hayes, who is staffed to the Committee. Before we get started, just asking everyone to take a moment to turn off or silence your cellphone. Today, the Committee is holding hearings on LO-22-0027 Quarterly Legislative Hearing, Department of Transportation, and LO-22-0019 Quarterly Legislative Oversight Hearing, Department of Public Works. We're going to start with LO-22-0227 for the purpose of calling for quarterly oversight hearings for the Department of Transportation regarding agency operations, staffing, safety of fleet facilities and equipment, and other responsibilities to improve transparency and accountability in serving the residents of Baltimore City. We're going to hear from representatives from the Department of Transportation, and then we're going to have an opportunity for Committee members to ask any questions that they may have. And at this time, we're going to begin with Department of Transportation. You guys have a presentation.
Hello. Good morning, Madam Chair and Committee Members. I am Corinne Johnson, Director for the Baltimore City Department of Transportation. It's my pleasure to be here with you all today, and I have a number of my key members of the leadership team here as well. So this morning, we will be hitting on our staffing analysis and recent hiring changes, our streamlining efforts to include project closeouts and permit outreach, communications outreach, and then some other key agency updates to include ADA, traffic calming, automated enforcement, our resurfacing efforts, grants, and legislation and policy. So since February's legislative oversight hearing, the agency has stabilized significantly in our staffing levels. We have observed a slight uptick of filled positions over the course of the calendar year. And so as shown here on the slide, we have started 20 new staff since May 1st. 10 of those were during the citywide hiring event that was held on May 19th. We still have another 19 job offers that are pending, and of those, 12 of those are specific to school crossing guards. So we've been doing a big push, and there's been some great media covers to help us in those recruitment efforts. Additionally, we have been working with the Mayor's Office of Employment Development and their higher-up program to hire temporary employees, and so we have 14 seasonal maintenance aides and two community aides. And interestingly, on last week Monday, on one of my tours of the facility, I met one of those individuals that was hired through the higher-up program, and he gave rave reviews of the city and working with the maintenance division. We are continuing also to reorganize and repurpose staff following our recent changes in the conduit division. We've filled key positions within our traffic division and within some of the other maintenance division areas to help with the workforce needs in those areas. And we're also working on some analysis with the HR team to identify talent gaps and create somewhat of a talent development plan and find ways that we can take the current vacant positions that we had that maybe are much harder to fill, maybe to find the right candidate, and come in with a different approach to those positions, whether it is to have a different outreach campaign or to try to revamp those positions and make them more critical for what we need today. So there's various sort of streamlining efforts that we are working on. As I'm going through and digging through the agency, we're looking for ways that we can try to better align things. One of those, although it's not directly on the slide, one of those, for example, is with our traffic calming efforts, there's been a change to take the pavement signing and marking team that was under maintenance, and they're now within the traffic division. So a lot of those work orders that would be coming through from the traffic division would go over to maintenance, and so we've got that within the one house, so there's more direct communication and streamlined efforts there. Getting into the, getting into the project closeout, we've had an increase of staff from just one staff person to four. We continue to work to try to digitize records, ensuring the paper files are converted to those digital storage capabilities. And then we're also looking for ways to improve the overall construction management and close our process to include exploring the use of tablets during the construction phase to minimize some of the manual data entry that the project closeout team will have to enter in at the closing of the project. And we've also added this as a part of a task to the agency's project. Oh, sorry. We did not move ahead. Hold on. Let me go back. There we go. Nope. There we go. All right. Sorry about that. My apologies. And so we've also added this task to the agency's project stat schedule as well. The items on that slide are the ones that I just referenced. All right. So now getting into improved communication, we've been working diligently with BGE to make some improvements in these areas, kind of dividing up the different types of work that they have. Obviously, emergencies are emergencies, though those are going to vary based on the scale and scope of the emergency, and so the communication will be a little bit different in those instances. With the BGE STRI program, initial notification letters are required six to eight weeks prior to construction, and then with follow-up notification letters, one to two weeks prior to construction with community organization and elected official outreach. For the electric projects, letters are sent to, excuse me, to community organizations and elected officials prior to the project moving forward. For vegetation management efforts with BGE, door hangers are to be placed at properties adjacent to impacted vegetation with additional outreach conducted for full tree removals. And then for general maintenance, customers are to be notified a minimum of 10 days in advance for planned power disruptions and seven days in advance for planned gas work. I know there's been a lot of attention on the amendment to settlement agreement with BGE for conduits, and so we've been making great progress with that and that team as well, that new conduit division. One of the critical aspects was for us to define the difference between maintenance and capital improvements. So we've worked through those details. We're clear on what the city's internal crews are going to be working on moving forward and what is going to count towards those capital improvements. We've seen, excuse me. We've seen, as anticipated, great collaboration with them. For example, there is the Warner Street project that kind of a city developer partnership is going on right now, and there were some concerns with the work in trying to do the conduit work under that project, and so BGE has taken that on and will be doing all of the work in support of that capital project. And then BGE has also utilized the recommendations of DOT to reach out directly, have outreach to a lot of the contractors and consultants that we were working with under our conduits program to solicit them to do work under their capital improvements so that they're continuing to support the businesses in this area. So with ADA, we continue to make great progress building out our ADA Compliance Division, which is DOT's newest division. We have aggressively pursued talent, which includes five different college interns. We have students from more of the lower level of their undergraduate degree all the way up through their PhD levels, and so we're utilizing their skill set to meet the specific needs throughout the division. Many of these are coming from Morgan State University, University of Baltimore, and Mulholland College. We conducted a demonstration of a concrete grinder to address, potentially address locations where we have an elevation change in the sidewalk, so in situations where it's approximately about a one and a half inch, maybe about two-inch lip elevation difference where historically we would put it through our footways process and would be a long backlog. We had a successful demonstration of a concrete grinder, which could basically smooth out that lip, and that was done within about 20 minutes timeframe. So we are exploring the options, whether to purchase and bring that equipment in-house or look at some type of a pilot project, something potentially with a contractor or someone, but we're finding ways to be a little more efficient in our operations, to try to help reduce costs and address some of the outstanding work needed in the city. Regarding the footways teams specifically, they have been making great progress in 2023 with over 192,000 square feet completed and about 75,000 square feet remaining. So I know in square foot terms, that might not equate to something, so with an average sidewalk panel being approximately 20 to 25 square feet, that's about 12,100 panels repaired. And then finally, the ADA Compliance Division is actively reviewing all of the 301 SRS involving curb ramps specifically, so they can pull them out and make sure they're captured within their program, and identifying certain priority repair locations. We continue to make some headway in terms of completing traffic calming projects and increasing the division's capacity, and the division is actively researching best practices regarding public display of traffic calming requests. For calendar year '23, the division is following the recently adopted traffic calming policy, which incorporates equity into the project prioritization process. In March '23, they launched the citywide traffic signal optimization project, which is making great progress, but there is still a lot of data for them to collect and fully deliver on this project, which is a multi-year project. DOT is currently projected to surpass last year's agency record of speed hump installations by the end of calendar year '23 with over 80 speed bump projects forecasted to be completed. Now, recognizing those are projects, so different locations might have two speed humps, or some might have three or four, so the actual numbers can range. To date, precisely 55 speed hump projects have been completed for a total of 166 individual speed humps during this construction season. And they're also working on some major staffing improvements and recently completed several position upgrades, including creating a new Traffic Analyst III classification. And finally, they continue to build on creating a pipeline, a talent pipeline, with the local universities, particularly in partnership with Morgan State University, and have certain interns working with them presently. Here is a list of both our recently completed traffic calming projects and then those that are either actively underway or planned. Many of these, like the Sedonia Avenue one, included traffic, included, excuse me, speed humps, like in the 58 to 5900 blocks of Sedonia. Additionally, I know that there's been a lot of questions about a public-facing portal, so we have been doing some outreach to other local cities, agencies to look at their systems. And B sit and DOT's data team are currently working on some of the data architecture to understand where the data we pull from and stored, as well as developing a preliminary mapping plan. So there is progress on that effort. There's a lot that goes into it, but we are making some progress. And then currently, the signing and pavement marking teams are working on refreshing some of the long lines, pavement marking lines in areas with many outstanding requests. They're spending about one to one and a half weeks in a particular area before moving to another area, and they will be installing additional speed hump signs. So although the speed humps themselves might not be in right now or even in the next month, they're going on to proactively install those signs in anticipation of those speed humps being put in. DOT's ATVS decision, Division continues to expand efforts to enforce traffic laws and improve safety. As of July, the 83 Speed Camera Program has been fully operational for one year. Took a lot of work to get to that point, and we've seen great success in their program. DOT is committed to studying the safety impacts of the program and will be analyzing all the crash data, recognizing that when we get that data from the state, there is kind of like a one-year lag in that crash data, so there will be some delays in us getting all of the data to do that full analysis. The agency's efforts concerning the implementation of the automated bus lane enforcement continues to make steady progress, and the Division is preparing to install four automated red light camera enforcement systems at several of the highest crash intersections. And these highest crash intersections include Orleans, Gay, Enzer intersection, Edmondson and Hilton intersection, North and Pennsylvania intersection, and Liberty Heights and Riceus The calendar year '23 external and internal resurfacing marks a significant turning point for DOT. With the forecasted HUR increases for the next fiscal years, along with some additional $10 million anticipated in ARPA funding, our capacity is slated to greatly increase. The Division is currently working on finalizing the list of those ARPA funded resurfacing locations, as well as the work for the next fiscal year. Of course, our calendar year '23 resurfacing is actively underway. The latest Operation Orange Cone's updates are updated on our website so that you all and the public can look and see what has been done, what is underway, and what is planned. Some of the resurfacing projects nearing completion include portions of St. Lo Drive, Windsor Mill Road, Madison Avenue, Warwick Avenue, and 9th Street. Of course, while we have our federal formula dollars and we have our HUR, we are always looking for other opportunities to fund the much-needed work, and so we pursue many different grants. Design is currently underway for Traffic's $3.2 million Highway Safety Improvement Program Grant Award. We submitted a, an additional Safe Streets for All grant. This was for $10 million. This is a demonstration and community engagement education type of grant, and that is on top of the grant that we previously received for $1 million for the, to create the agency's safety action plan. DOT is in the final stages of executing the grant agreement with the federal highway for the existing West Baltimore United grant effort, and then we are considering additional grant funds via the next round of the Reconnected Communities Grant and still exploring other grant opportunities as well. And just to note, the Highway Safety Improvement Program grant will directly support pedestrian safety improvements at 16 different locations across the city. From a legislation and policy effort standpoint, we submitted the 2024 Legislative Session Priorities to MOGR in July. We were successful in implementing the curbside commercial policy that went into effect July 1st. Applications are currently being reviewed, and we have additional outreach for those that have existing facilities but have not yet submitted applications. We, we worked with, in partnership with the Administration and City Council to secure official state transit-oriented development designation for Penn Station and Riceus Town Plaza metro station, and we worked to pass required local legislation to eventually designate it North Avenue Light Rail and Penn North Metro as TODs. So that concludes the presentation portion for DOT. Thank you.
Let me get this mic on. Thank you, Director. We're going to get directly into, thank you, going to get directly into some questions from the Committee, so I'll open the floor to the Committee for questions, and I'm actually going to start. Within your presentation, you did mention our crossing guards, and we know the school starts on Monday, September the 28th, if I'm correct. It seems like you guys have made significant progress with hiring crossing guards. How many vacancies do we still have at this time?
Do you know that number?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Around 60 or so.
Just for the, I'm sorry, just for the record, can you just state your name?
I'm sorry. Nick Fontan, as I'm the DOT HR Chief.
Give me the number again, please.
It's around 60.
Do you guys have an official list of the schools that obviously would not, as of today, would not have a crossing guard?
I believe our safety chief would have that, yes.
Okay. So instead of having you guys, if it's 60, I'm going to assume that it's a pretty large number. Just as a Committee request, if you guys can get that information to us by tomorrow, close of business. And again, that request is just a, give me the number again of how many vacancies we have for the crossing guards, and then also just a full list of the schools that are missing crossing guards as of today. The second thing, the second question I had, and I'm just going straight into, I'm going to be focused on staffing for a bit. At a previous hearing and also within your current presentation, you guys uplifted an official partnership that you have with Morgan State University, also some other schools you included as well. It was previously stated that there were three engineering interns, engineering interns, and you guys had interest in having interns within other divisions. Obviously, from your presentation, you said that you had five interns within the ADA Compliance Division, and I'm very happy about that. At this time, do you have a listing of how, of the current amount of interns that the entire agency has?
I don't know that number offhand, but we can quickly pull that information for you. I know that within, I believe it's within traffic, within ADA, and then also in the Director's Office, I do, I'm aware of interns presently, but we can provide that complete number for you.
Are there any other divisions, are there any other divisions where there are opportunities for interns or that you guys have interns within outside of the ones that you just listed and that we know about?
There could be potential opportunities for additional interns. I don't recall offhand if we have any other locations. I want to verify that.
Have any of your interns moved into full-time positions? And I want to say, the first time we had this discussion may have been November 2022, and then we circled back in February, so I just want to know since then, has any, have any of them moved into full-time positions?
So for those interns specifically, I don't believe so, just because of where they are in their college career. So I'd have to just verify if we have anyone that potentially did graduate and might be working on anything. I know that we have, I believe we do have someone within maybe the traffic division that we were working towards, someone that did interview with us. I just don't know the status of that HR recruitment.
Liam Davis, Legislative Affairs Manager, DOT. I can say folks that people here should be familiar with, James Turner and Luciano Diaz that are on our Government Affairs Policy Team started out as mayoral fellows, and we actually kept them on after that summer. I think they started with us in 2021. They're onboard as, as employees year-round for us now.
Just as a Committee request, would you guys be able to get me just how many interns you currently have present and what divisions they're within? If you could also just let me know the schools that these interns are currently attending.
Will do.
I have one more question before I get to our Committee members. At a previous hearing, I highlighted DPW's water, let me just pull back a bit, water and wastewater knowledge capture policy. It was for departing what they call high-profile 10-year employees if they had 10 years of service, and also employees who are leaving with 30-plus years. Knowing that our, right now, as of a fairly recent study, we know that our workforce, over 50%, can literally retire today. So this is, this is why I'm asking this question. I just want to set some background. And at the time, DOT, and this would have also been likely at the November 2022 hearing. So at the time, DOT stated that they were interested in, in stating a formal policy of their own that was similar regarding knowledge capture. It was noted that the Chief of Staff was working on a continuance of operations plan. I just wanted to check if the agency has moved forward with any of the formalized planning or policies around knowledge capture, and also what are the timelines around those initiatives, if so?
I can't, do you remember anything? Yeah, I can't remember the details of that specifically. I know that we recently did pull some additional information on the years of service and age of employees and where they're located. We've been looking at certain positions where we say have one person doing a job and trying to figure out how we need to provide some cross-training within those areas so that we don't have that, that lynchpin there. But I would need to go back and look into that specifically.
Okay. So I'm, I'm going to put that as a Committee request again. Now, I'm pretty sure this was from the November 2022 hearing. If I can just get an update on where you guys are at on a continuance of operations plan, and also welcome in our Councilman Robert Stokes for joining us today. We're going to start with Councilman Bullock.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Director. I am pleased that you did address traffic calming. As you know, that's been a concern for many of us in prioritizing those projects. My question is, is there a list of the traffic calming projects somewhere that we can access with like specific timing and status?
We can provide you a list of all of those. It's not, again, because we're still working on that whole public-facing portal, but we can give you a list of what's, I guess, for this calendar year of what's in the queue.
Yeah, that'd be great if we could have it, you know, district-specific. That should be helpful for, for our colleagues. And then, as you mentioned, being more public-facing, I think that's very much appreciated. So in terms of, you mentioned the website, talking about resurfacing projects, would that say, would it be the same expectation that traffic calming would have the same, I guess, presentation for the public?
Something along those lines. It'll look somewhat different. So the Operation Orange Cone was developed by a GIS team, so for the traffic calming efforts, our GIS team is going to be engaged with B sit and our data team as well. So it'll look something like that, but.
And then the last question around traffic calming, would we have an indication as to how the, how it was generated? So for instance, we have some that are coming from communities. There may be some that, that you have suggested on your own. Would that be in the data that we will receive? And the reason why I'm asking is also because we know that there are a number of requests that have come through via 301. We know also folks reach our offices who are curious as to, I guess we'd like to know where the requests are coming from, if they're coming through the process as it is now.
We, likely from knowledge of staff, I guess, and creating that list for you, we could kind of like manually put that information in there just from awareness standpoints. Yeah, many of them, yes, are potentially a capture of 301 elected official request or hearing from communities directly, so it could come from multiple areas. But then, like I said, there are, might be some situations where the traffic is looking at, you might have a request for a particular intersection, but then they may assess beyond that intersection in that general area, and there might be some additional traffic calming they might do, and that would be a little bit separate from that 301 request, but it's still potentially triggered from that community request.
Got it. That would be helpful, and thank you.
Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. DOT was to have produced a bike-friendly speed hump design by July 23, July 31st. Has that been done?
So I, I think it was to provide a status update on that item. I, I know that we provided some information. I don't know the status of everything going back to the Committee for that.
I haven't received that.
We, we don't submit, we don't submit directly. For those type of things, we don't submit directly to the Councilmembers.
Sophia, does the Administration have that?
Can you repeat the question?
Does the Administration have DOT's update regarding bike-friendly speed hump design?
Not that I know of, but I can get back to you on that.
Did DOT submit it to the Administration?
All of our requests have been submitted.
Okay. Sophia, that was due on July 31st and has not been received. I sent an email about it last week, and it still has not been received.
We'll follow up on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Johnson? Director Johnson, when you first joined the city, it was in the position of the Deputy Director for Complete Streets. Is it your understanding of the Complete Streets law and manual as law and mandatory guidance, or is it something you see as optional?
I don't know that I can give a general response to that. There is the Complete Streets ordinance, and then there's the Complete Streets manual. If we're getting into some of the law things, I don't know that I'm equipped to answer those questions.
The ordinance is a law.
Yes, the ordinance is the law.
And so it has the weight of law as needs to be adhered to legally, must be adhered to, and it mandated the creation of the manual as a document to assist the department and the public in understanding how the law enacted by ordinance must be upheld or will continue to be upheld. I guess my question is, in your mind, does that equate to something that is optional that the department can choose not to adhere to?
So again, I believe the ordinance itself is the law. I don't believe from a law standpoint, the manual is a law itself. So what I could tell you is that when we are doing our work, our projects, our traffic signal optimization, we are incorporating Complete Streets into those efforts. So I don't believe we're taking an optional type of approach to it.
My question is particularly, I guess, prompted by those projects that do not adhere to the standards put forth in the law and exhibited as standards in the manual that exists to assist the department in properly enacting and implementing the law. I'm trying to understand how we have a law that mandates certain design elements and then subsequently install, design and install projects that don't meet those legal standards. And I'm asking here because the department has already been asked these questions in writing and received no response about specific projects.
Okay, so I'm not sure which one specifically you're referring to. I know that there recently were some questions about the St. Lo project, and I do recall there were some responses and the information provided back to requesters.
The information that was provided was incorrect, and that received a response saying, no, this is patently incorrect information that the department is providing in response to the concerns. Will the department re-review the response that has been given with an understanding of how the law is actually written and what the standards actually are? And that receives no response, has not received a response to date.
Okay, so I'll pull back up, search for any rebuttal that you sent this way, and revisit that with the legal team, just to make sure that there was, there wasn't any type of mistakes or anything in the response, and make sure the understanding is accurate.
Thank you. I'd like to, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Johnson, I had a question about improved utility coordination. So I believe this is Slide 5 from the presentation, particularly with emergencies. One of the major issues that we are experiencing in our districts is emergency coordination with BG&E and the lack of, the lack of notice and follow-up to residents. Can you share that coordination workflow that you all are working on, if you have any, any streamlining efforts to share during today's committee hearing?
Forgive me, I don't have the language and everything for that specifically.
Yes.
I can provide that to you.
Definitely, definitely. Thank you. Madam Chair, can I have that as an official committee request, please?
Yes.
Thank you. My second question has to do with vegetation management. One of the major concerns in the Brooklyn Mass shooting in relation to cameras was having the vegetation overshadow the cameras. Can you speak to what types of proactive efforts, what type of proactive inter-agency efforts that DOT is initiating with not only city agencies, but also our public housing facilities with HABC?
So I'll say that that isn't an established workflow right now. I can make those points with it. I know for Brooklyn specifically, we did coordinate between DOT and DP, sorry, forestry. So essentially for DOT, anything that we can access from the ground, we will trim up. So if it's brush and things like that, we can address that. If it's things that are up higher overhead, then that's where, I'm sorry, Wrexham Parks Forestry Team would then handle those higher items. And so I know in some of my conversations with forestry, they're focusing on certain things from a risk management standpoint, so we can definitely touch base with them to find out where are the different cameras in the city and if need be focused on the housing authority locations and then go from there.
Definitely, and I just wanted to caveat, not specifically focusing on housing authority. My goal is to really proactively work with the agencies to kind of do these things in advance. So having a list using our 311 data, having that proactive list for inter-agency coordination for a lot of these issues because they require inter-agency approach. And so, Madam Chair, if that can also be an official committee request as well, to get a list of DOT cameras throughout the city and the proactive approach to vegetation management with other agencies such as DPW and Baltimore City Wreckin' Parks Forestry.
What's a reasonable time that you guys would be able to furnish that information to the committee and to Councilwoman Porter?
So we haven't had any, obviously, we haven't had any conversation on that yet. I don't know, I'm sorry. It's hard because I don't want to speak for the other agencies as well, because I'm not sure. Most, probably most likely, most of the actual trimming that has to happen for the trees is probably with the forestry division. So it's difficult for me to speak on that, given it's there. I will have a touch point. I will reach out with them even immediately, you know, today, tomorrow, to initiate that conversation. Maybe try to have an initial meeting within a week. Is that feasible, at least to have that initial meeting? And then see what timeline for the additional information we can provide? I don't know how to handle that one, since it's outside of my purview.
Are you okay with Mr. Hayes, the committee staff, checking in with the director in two weeks and getting a progress update?
Yes, a progress update would be good in two weeks, but just to confirm, it's not merely just a list of, you know, not merely just a list, but really an approach. So really having a thoughtful approach and really kind of leveraging on the CAO's office, that inter-agency working group, really kind of working through that. So two weeks is time. I would actually push it out to a month because my expectation is that it will be a robust inter-agency approach that can be shared with council members.
I think that should be reasonable. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to get to Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Johnson and Ms. Galloway and Kendall, your staff have been great, and I appreciate it. And I had this conversation with you before, like Broadway, North Avenue, which is a busy street, are we putting together, I guess would be a crew, and I know y'all have shortage, but a crew to manage those tree wells? Because sometimes you can't even see the trees because the grass has overgrown in the tree wells, and it's suggesting, and Kendall's been good with that, but it's still, with the grass still growing, we know as soon as you cut it, it'll way back. But looking at Broadway and North Avenue, all those boulevards, I think we should be addressing, attacking those areas because that's where our most traffic at, and people come in and out of Baltimore. So I was wondering, have we put a crew or put something together to address those smaller little things like those tree wells on our most busy streets or our boulevards, which gives Baltimore a different look instead of just seeing trees and you can't see the bottom of it because the grass is not being cut in the timely matter? And Kendall, you've been great, so I appreciate it, but you know, to keep chasing it and chasing it, it becomes overwhelming sometimes.
Yeah, good morning, council members. For that particular, all right, we actually do have those tree pits on rotation, the bump outs are particularly on North Avenue. I will admit, a combination of things, kind of, you know, even when we cut it, it doesn't look like it's cut. You know, we get a deluge of rain. We have some staffing challenges as well, but anytime that we can pivot to those locations, they're definitely on our radar.
My other question is, when we issue out contracts to contractors that cut grass, who is watching the house? Because I'm seen to be watching it, and they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing in terms of maintaining, because I'm going to use a good example. When your contractor is cut all the way down by Hopkins, they cut the median strip real pretty cute, trim it up. When they get to Chase and Broadway, they just cut, leave it messy. One of the contractors, there was a, you know, the tree branches, little small branches, he was not going to get that up unless I said something. He said it wasn't trash. So now they're cleaning it up, but if the people and myself not watching how they're cutting the median strip on Broadway, that's a problem. And I wonder who is watching the contractors to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing? I shouldn't be doing that, but they're not doing what they're supposed to do, and I brought this up before the hearing, so.
Councilman, we actually are monitoring that, as you would know from previous conversations. Also, the OPI team from the mayor's office for Clean Stat is requesting from us QA QC policies and updates. So as a part of that Clean Stat, we regularly inform them of any issues that we had with the vendor, which we had done at the beginning of the season, as we had noticed that there was some lacking in the services that were being provided. So we have been informing the mayor's office, OPI team of those issues. We have constantly been communicating with the vendor to let them know what our concerns are, especially those that you raised for that particular area. And we have seen some progress. It's not what we expect, but we have seen some progress from the vendor. I will say, I think there has been some shakeup over at the vendor. They're actually in the third year of their five-year contract. It's a three-year contract with two one-year renewals, and we hadn't had these kind of issues in the first two years. But in this third year, we're experiencing a lot more issues, and I think it's due to some shakeup over at the vendor themselves.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have one more question. There was a study done on salaries all over the city in terms of city employees, and one of them was done here in Baltimore. The salaries were for, raises for all city employees. I asked for this study before. I still have requested. I remember the hearing asked for the study. Well, they keep saying, I guess they don't have it, but the salary, from my understanding, MAP employees got a raise, but the city employees from Local 44 and Cub did not get a raise because when a new director came, and they said, we got to look at it. So are you familiar with this study done on salaries throughout this, I guess, the state? But they did do a study for salaries here for city employees, and I'm talking about city employees who never get a raise, who really do the work here in the city. And from my understanding, if I might can be corrected, their MAP employees got a raise, but when it come to other city employees, they say they got to look at it, they're going to work on it. So, Madam Chair, I would like to request to see that study that was done through HR. I don't know if you're familiar with it. Can somebody answer that?
Nick Fontanaz, HR manager, was going to speak to this.
Yes, I can speak to that. So DHR, the main HR, they would have all those studies, and to my knowledge, MAPS employees have not received a raise in over a year. I know negotiations are going on right now with 44, Cub, and MAPS, but nothing has been signed. But DHR or the Labor Commissioner's Office would be the right place to get those numbers.
Okay, Madam Chair, the request is the salary studies that was done by DHR, can we request to see that study for city employees?
Nina, I'm going to let you take that one.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Councilman Stokes will follow up with DHR and the Labor Commissioner's Office and provide this to you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and circle back to staffing. So I know that DPW has the YH2O Career Mentoring Program. It's for city residents 18 to 24 who have a high school diploma, GED, if they're under, underemployed or unemployed, and are not currently enrolled in a job training program or post-secondary education. They also have another program that they recently rolled out, which was Be More Wise. My question is, does DOT have any similar programs or initiatives that provide career development, job opportunities for our young adult population?
Good morning again. We've actually partnered with MOED through the Higher Up Program to try to get people in. I think we've at least started permanently or full-time at least two or three in the last six months in the maintenance division. We've had preliminary talks with DHR about, and DPW about getting a talent pipeline the way they do it with their apprenticeship programs. So we are, we don't have anything concrete like DPW has, but we have engaged them in talks to try to get an apprenticeship program or programs.
Are you guys having any conversations with the, I know that you said it's nothing concrete, but do you have like a timeline or are you having extended conversations with DHR, with the administration about how important it is that your agency, as we talk about retaining, retention? And if I go back to like a quote from your presentation from the budget hearing, you know, one of your FY24 goals, promote operational excellence by attracting, developing, and retaining a talented, diverse, and engaged workforce. So it's nothing concrete right now, but what are your expectations for a timeline and maybe set up a similar program? Past conversations.
Yes, Madam Chair. I can't give you a concrete timeline or timelines because we do rely on DHR for a lot of these different things, but I will tell you, we have engaged them to try to even fund this so that we can get a pipeline in. Like I said, I can't really give you a timeline, but I do know that we are trying to get at least apprenticeship programs through DOT into our lower-level position so that they can grow internally.
And to add to that also, in me looking at some of, some old data of analysis done back in like 2018 timeframe for the agency, and then in recent conversations with staff in multiple facilities, training and career development kind of kept coming, coming up in that conversation. One of the things I'm looking into is identifying the right position and then trying to bring on a trainer in-house, someone that can, for example, if we have laborers, people that come in through the higher program or wherever else, they come in as laborer, but they aspire to be a CEO driver, or someone aspires to be working in the traffic division and handling like our electronics team or things like that. We have a lot of areas, electricians and things, where you don't see that talent just coming in. And so we're looking at having that trainer and then the additional resources and talking with DHR to actually position that up. It's just that it's not here right now. So that's actively in our, in our discussions, something that we're working on, but there isn't a specific timeline. I can try to create an approximate timeline for some of these efforts. It's just I don't have it right now to give to you.
And I just want you all to know why it's important to me. I'm glad you're having conversations. I just want to make sure that that ball is moving down the court as fast as we can get it down there, that we're winning as a city. I keep thinking about that number. We over 50% of our workforce who can retire as of today, and a lot of those folks are within DOT. And I want to make sure that Baltimore City residents and other people who are qualified have these opportunities. So as long as you know that's important to us on the council, that we're just moving that ball down the court.
Understood.
You led me into another question that we had from a previous hearing, and I guess this will be sort of a follow-up because you, the agency, I want to say your predecessor, the former director, Sharky. the former director, Sharky, he spoke about, he uplifted the partnership with DPW regarding training in-house folks for CDL positions. I wanted to know that you guys have an update on how many individuals have actually been trained since November 2022, when we had, when we started that conversation.
So we are partnering with risk management. They've actually taken the lead on this. There haven't been any DOT members trained through this program. We're in the identification stage of a space to train them. I can tell you that those conversations, those meetings have been ramping up the last three months with risk. Thankfully, they're taking the lead on that. So that we are trying to get as many people with CDLs trained up and have a location for them to train. But as of right now, we don't have anybody from DOT that has been trained through that program.
Do you guys have a vacancy number for your CDL drivers in DOT?
Yes, currently, there are 22 CDL ones, down from 36 just a year before.
Thank you, council members. Did you all have any additional questions?
Madam Chair, I have one question.
Okay, I'm going to shoot on this side of the room first, and I'm going to get back to you, Councilwoman Stokes. Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. My last two remaining questions actually have to do with two items that I didn't see in today's presentation related to abandoned cars. And also, you knew I was going to ask.
It's okay.
And remaining trucks within, within our community, remaining commercial trucks, excuse me, within our communities and house signage can be a big part of that. Can you speak to some of the progress that the agency has done over the last few months related to those issues and what the agency plans to do in the future? And I'm really focused on, you know, we have, from my understanding, we have an oversaturation of abandoned cars within our tow lot. So what is the approach going to be from a DOT perspective? Really kind of consolidating those cars, working with state-level agencies? And Liam, I'm particularly focused on, you know, state-level agencies like the MVA and the Maryland General Assembly to really reduce those numbers so that we can have a consistent kind of tow of these types of, these types of vehicles, whether it be commercial or abandoned vehicles within our neighborhoods.
Yes, so as far as the abandoned vehicles, we have developed a partnership with BPD. There's been some improved requests to our towing division to do what's called our ride-alongs. And so with that, the, a tow truck driver is going along with a police officer. And then they are doing the scans of the license plate readers. If it turns out that there is a pull order for those tags for some reason with MVA or someone, then on the spot, they're able to tow that vehicle. We've also seen uptick in, in identifying some of those abandoned vehicles and giving them towed a little bit quicker. With the commercial vehicles, the trucks that I know are plaguing your area in particular, we have been increasing our enforcement efforts. Some of those have been successfully removed. But we are also finding where we'll go there, we'll do the enforcement, we'll do the citation. And because it's a large, heavy tow, once the truck driver gets there, then it's already been relocated. So we're seeing some of those situations as well. As far as the actual number of vehicles in our tow yards, although there are some of those abandoned vehicles in there, unfortunately, right now, a lot of the cars that we are seeing are some of those stolen vehicles. And so although there's not much the DOT can directly do to improve that, thankfully, I am hearing that BPD is doing outreach and they're giving away some of the different events, community events and things like that, the steering wheel locks to help to deter those cars from being stolen. So those are kind of a majority, a lot of the vehicles that are on our yards that are taking up some of the space. So the sooner we can get those back to the rightful owner, the better. And.
Last one was signage.
And signage. So where there's particular locations, if it is a really plagued location, then we can look at that and try to, and put in some type of signing at a particular location. The concern about just blanketing, you know, certain areas is oversaturation of the signage. And then also, you know, a matter of the materials and things as well. And if we put signage here, then what's going to happen is then they'll just try to park over here where there isn't a sign. So signing can be useful in certain locations. But in other ways, it doesn't really address the true issue. It just relocates the issue. So if there's a particular location you have in mind that we can look into.
Yeah, and I'm particularly focused on signage for commercial trucks within neighborhoods so that they are not going through neighborhoods. And the neighborhood that I'm particularly referencing is one in Westport off the 295 corridor where, you know, signage that this is not a pass-through for trucking. I think that needs to be, that needs to be more robust. And I know that there are issues there with regard to signage and supplies and things of that nature. But I just want to make sure that we are having some sort of movement to that type of enforcement. Because from my understanding, that signage provides a connection to law enforcement to actually enforce on that particular area, whether it be license plate readers, citations, or tickets. So really kind of using those levers to make sure that we're properly enforcing. If signage is the way, if it's not the way. But we need to make sure that there is some sort of remedy for those types of situations.
And I can, if I may jump in, Councilwoman, because I can speak to this specific area. I know that we've had some proactive conversations. And I believe we've deployed a test truck camera at that exit off of 295 on Westport Street. And some of the enhanced signage we've put in isn't actually specific to trucks. But it was from the feedback, we are hearing that trucks were going illegally up the wrong, the one-way street. So we did like enhanced, do not enter signage. So sometimes you got to get a little creative. And I know we're still early in the game planning for FY25, but we have had internal conversations based off your feedback. Now that the city council passed the truck camera, increase the cap. We're going to be having those conversations with the administration and finance department to try and bump that up a little bit for us next year.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. With the truck cameras, I know that that's something that we talked about this last budget season. But just making sure that it's, again, whatever tool in our toolbox, whether it be signage, truck cameras, that it's not just something that's stagnant, but something because they do move kind of like, you know, throughout community, something that is more nimble. And that's one thing that, you know, you're right. We've had those type of internal conversations. And one of the major, one of the major issues was the nimbleness of those truck cameras to be moved throughout the neighborhood to kind of proactively catch those bad actors. So thank you so much.
Councilwoman Dorsey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to just start with a couple of follow-up questions on things that Councilwoman Porter was just asking about. I recall that DOT was in the process of leasing and addition, or acquiring use of an additional lot for the parking of towed vehicles a couple of years ago. Do we have that in place now? Is it in use?
Yes, we do have the additional lot.
Where is that? It's somewhere in South Baltimore?
Tavon, can you speak to the location?
Tapsco Avenue or something?
Yeah, it's, good evening, I mean, good morning, everyone. Tavon Braxton, Deputy Director of Operations. The lot is on Ninth Street in the Brooklyn neighborhood.
And it's in use?
Yes.
Is it at capacity?
No, it's not at capacity. We use that lot for specific types of vehicles. Mostly large vehicles that probably need to be broken down or just as a surplus for creating space within the impound lot on Pulaski.
Okay, I think one of the concerns is I've been copied on emails recently with Councilwoman Ramos about vehicles that have been stolen and where the owner is being told that they have to pay to get their vehicle back, despite there being a policy of not making people pay to retrieve stolen vehicles. But the reason that there's been some hangup is because those vehicles have been towed not to a city lot, but to a private tow company's yard, which, one, should never be happening in the first place. Two, we have fired towing companies in the past for doing this, even when we have said, do this because our lots are full. And three, you're telling me that the lots aren't full? So I don't understand why they were going to somebody's private lot in the first place. What's going on that we're towing any vehicles that should be going to city lots somewhere other than the city lots if it's not at capacity?
Yeah, so no, I'm aware of that. I don't know the specifics of why or what happened in that, in that scenario. But we have reached out and reiterated with BPD that for any vehicles that are identified as being stolen, that they bring them to the city lot. That's what then allows us, the city, to waive the associated tow fees. In this situation, for some reason, they were taken to a private lot. And that's what presented that issue. But, and I saw the notification that went out to BPD officers to reiterate that practice. So that should be addressed. But I don't know the details of why.
Okay, other than stolen vehicles, does anybody here have any explanation or reason why any vehicle towed at the behest of the city would be towed anywhere except to a city-owned property? Or any circumstance under which that would be acceptable?
So I don't think we were directly involved in that tow in those scenarios. Whenever we are towing vehicles, we're bringing them to our yards. So I don't, I can't give additional information regarding what occurred in that scenario.
I think there are cases where if a person reports their vehicle stolen and the police actually find that vehicle, they contact the vehicle owners. The vehicle owner then may suggest where they want the vehicle to be towed to. And I think sometimes that ends up not being the impound lot. Now, I'm not sure why they would do that. Because if it gets sent to the impound lot, we would uphold, you know, the no-charge fees. But if they do go to a private vendor's lot, they would have to pay. But there may be some other extenuating circumstances why the owner may want it to go elsewhere.
That would sound pretty outside the norm of my experience when how vehicles get towed. Okay. The other follow-up on Councilwoman Porter's questions is, I'm hearing that we are continuing to face the same problem that DOT has acknowledged has existed for years, that I and others, including DOT staff, went to great lengths to produce a report on, on how to address the problem, specifically the problem of some enforcement action being taken, where then, when DOT comes back to tow a vehicle that is ready for being towed, a bad actor has moved that vehicle. We have known this as a problem for a very long time and that it wastes everybody's time and resources to play a cat and mouse game. And as I began to say, I and others, including DOT staff, went to great lengths to produce a report on an alternative means of conducting that enforcement so that we avoid this cat and mouse game. And it's supported by, by opinions of the Law Department that these alternative methods can be employed by DOT. I guess I want to know if we're employing these recommendations that have been in DOT's hands for now years.
So one thing, of course, I haven't been here for years. So if you have that report, please forward it to me. I'll read through and take a look at it to see what those recommendations were. When I spoke earlier, it was regarding specifically the large commercial vehicle trucks. The only alternative to that would be for us to purchase a large, heavy tow type of tow vehicle ourselves and make sure we have the staff trained up to be able to do those toes. What I don't know is the frequency of those toes and kind of that cost-benefit analysis of purchasing that type of tow vehicle and the skills that needed from a personnel and having it based on the frequency of toes. So we wouldn't be using that for everyday, you know, cars and vehicles that are out in the roadway. So, but if there's some recommended solutions to it, I'm all for reviewing that and seeing what we can do.
Nina, can the administration please share this report with DOT? We've had it on hand for years. Numerous people here at DOT have this report. Liam has the report. It's been in DOT's hands for a long time.
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Stokes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Johnson, I know on North Avenue, we, the state put in them new bus lanes, truck lanes. My question is, are we working with the state? Because you got East Side Courthouse, you got Harford Heights, you got Sharp Letting Hall and that one school. And you should see how the people speed up and down. We call it traffic calming. But if you don't have cameras in those lanes where the bus is supposed to drive, somebody is going to get killed on North Avenue. So my question is, are we working with the state to install those cameras? Because I'm going to tell you, somebody will get killed. And why are we having the police stop them when we got enough crime? Police ain't trying to chase nobody in no bus lane. But if we put cameras there, we have more of traffic calming. Because right now, North Avenue don't have no traffic calming. If the lines, if the traffic too long when you're supposed to be in the right lane, they just go in the bus lane and just watch them speed up and down North Avenue, east and west. So are we working with the state? And I know that question came up before. My question is, why is it taking the state so long to install some cameras in those bus lanes? Are we going to wait till somebody seriously get injured before we decide to do that?
Okay, so it's not necessarily the state specifically leading that. We are working with, you know, the state in that effort. Unlike the other cameras, the other, you know, red light speed cameras that we've had throughout the city, when we postured up the 83 program, we had, say, vendor and abilities to kind of do that existing. With this one, because it's the commercial, I mean, it's the bus lane enforcement, and there's video aspects, it's a different type of camera. And we're working towards also making that competitive. So we had to develop all new specifications and documentation to go along with that. Liam, because it's legislative matter, Liam's kind of been working on that so he can provide a little more details into that. But that's kind of why we couldn't position it up really quickly.
Yeah, and thank you, Director. And we've definitely learned a lot about standing up things since I've been here, especially with the 83 program. And some of the feedback we got from the 83 speed camera program, in order to fast-track that, we amended it, amended an existing vendor contract. And while that did help us aggressively push that camera program through, we got it up and running within like a year of the law being passed, a little bit, a little bit longer. The feedback from the state legislature, when they passed the enabling legislation for the bus lane cameras, was they wanted to go out to bid so that all the vendors would have an equal shot at getting that contract. So I'm learning a lot about the bid process. And we've actually recently achieved a significant milestone. Clea, who is our lead traffic engineer and also head of Complete Streets, is really assisting in being a project manager in terms of advancing a consultant contract we're entering into. And Clea, do you mind just sharing that latest milestone?
Yeah, Clea Baumhofer, Complete Streets manager. So we are hiring a consultant to do some best practices research and work with MTA as well so that the bus cameras will meet both our needs and their needs and to identify the best locations for these cameras. So we are bringing them on board to help us put out that RFP and get the best equipment and vendor available.
Well, thank you for that clarification. And just one more, I want to just make a comment. Director Johnson, wrecking parks and housing. What happened at Brooklyn was very unfortunate. So I actually now have monthly meetings with them to find out the special permits, who used them, what type of event is, what time the event, and where is it going to be located? Because I don't want what happened very unfortunate in Brooklyn. And the community and the council people don't know who's giving the event because a lot of times they'll pop up. But the ones we can control more. But the ones we can control more of is the city-owned property. And working with Wreckin' Parks to make sure they have rules on their property. So if you want to use the space, you have to apply for a permit. So I want to thank your office and Wreckin' Parks and DCD for being part of that conversation, because I think that will help me out more. And how about the community? At least we all know what's happening on those properties that we control more as a city agency.
You're welcome, Councilman Stokes. And also just for all council members for your awareness. So, you know, of course, we've had inquiries from him and others as well. So we have like an internal list that we can pull from the system that provides information about special events. It's not the best format and all the infrastructure. We're trying to look at the list and see what reports we can pull to make it a little more streamlined for what you all might need to see, so that we can try to get to the point of having a, like, just a monthly list that we'll push out, that will let you know what's, kind of what's in the queue, so you have that awareness. I know a lot of things you all are aware with your engagement with the communities, but there may be others you're unaware of. And this, but this would be specifically those special events, things, applications that come into DOT that we could then push out to you all. So we are working to not only provide that information with Councilman Stokes, but provide it to everyone.
I just want to piggyback, I want to piggyback on the question regarding the bus cameras from Councilman Stokes. During the last budget hearing, I think you guys mentioned that you were on track for FY '25 and that partnership with what was at MDOT and MTA with the bus cameras. With all of this new, I don't know, procurement bidding system that's on the state level, is that timeline still the same for that FY '25, for those bus cameras to roll out?
Thank you. I think it's, it's like we're kind of shooting for that. I think we can still get there somewhere in FY '25. But again, I'm kind of learning as we go as well. But I'm confident in our team. I'm confident in MTA's team. We will, I can make a commitment to get you an updated timeline to the committee, Madam Chair.
That'll work for me. I want to go straight into ordinance 22-0252, Commercial Vehicle Monitoring System that I put forward, that some good folks within DOT work with me on. The same issues that my colleague is experiencing, many of us are experiencing those issues throughout our districts. When can we look forward to, since this council overwhelmingly passed this bill, look forward to some form of commitment from the administration for us to roll out additional truck cameras for our neighborhoods? Where are you guys at in that, where are you guys at in that timeline, timelines today?
So, so that is an item we're working on identifying, and then we will include that request in the next budget cycle. The commercial vehicle, I mean, I'm sorry, I keep saying commercial vehicle. The, the, the commercial vehicle, yeah, the commercial vehicle enforcement cameras have an additional expense from the city standpoint. So that's been, and this is something I kind of like more recently, past months, learned. And so we're going to have to include that in the next budget cycle to kind of cover the costs to install the additional ones. So right now, we're working on any of those existing ones of potentially just relocating them, but we haven't been adding additional cameras into the, what's out there.
We see value in expansion.
Yeah.
Based on the feedback we get from the public, the feedback we get from the city council. So as we kind of, we just got through, as everyone here is aware, the FY '24 budget cycle process. So as things start heating up for FY '25, that's literally going to be on the top of our list.
I think it's a lot of opportunities with HHR money, with infrastructure money, to make sure that we can roll this out. I definitely see value in it, I know my colleagues do, because they voted, again, overwhelmingly for this. And I know that there's an expense, but like I said during that hearing, the expense is when those trucks are coming down those streets, and we have to continuously repair the streets. The expense is what it's doing to the foundations of homeowners, property owners, mostly in middle neighborhoods within my district, throughout the city, who have to take on this burden, when their house is shaking just a bit because some truck is coming down a street that it's not supposed to. So I just want to make sure that we all just keep our eyes on that. What I'll say is, let's just circle back this month and just have a further conversation about it. I want to get into one quick question. I wanted to know if we still had a backlog for signage, for the signs, for the posting? Before we had like an issue with procurement with materials, I know that there was some headway that was made at our last, at our last hearing that was noted, but do we still have a backlog for putting up signs? For example, handicap signs? My, a lot of DOT has worked with me and my neighbors on some drug-free, drug-free school zone signs. Do we have, do we still have a backlog on those?
So the backlog in the signage request still exists because we're still playing that catch-up? We have from different avenues, ways that we're bringing in additional materials. So we've just got in another kind of smaller order of shipment of some of the posts. We have some others coming in. We currently have some of the sheet metal that's needed to install signs as well. So the team has items that they're working on right now. And then we also had, like I spoke about earlier about the speed humps, we had some speed hump signs that were previously manufactured, and they're just like in stock essentially. And so now you've got some additional posts, and they've been working to install those as well. We're still have more materials that we're anticipating coming in. We're, and then we're also positioning up some new procurements to include a lot of the different items that we need. Some of what's also helped us is by, again, aligning the pavement marking and signing team with traffic. Traffic knows personally all those different work orders and things are coming in the pike of what they typically anticipate. And so they're now leading that effort in the procurement process to get that rolling status of the, of the materials and things coming in. So we've made headway, we have materials right now, but it's not necessarily enough to address the entire backlog.
Do we have an exact number of what the backlog is for signage?
We would have to get those updated numbers. I know we provided them, I think, from the last hearing, so we can provide some updates from that, just like we did before.
Can we, can we get some updated numbers?
Yes.
What's, can, is two weeks a reasonable time for you guys to put that together and possibly break it down by category on what that backlog looks like?
I think, I think we used like those different service request numbers last time, so we could kind of use that same format. So yes, two weeks is fine.
Okay. I have one last question before we start closing it out and I get back to my colleagues. Has, you mentioned during the hearing, that steady increase of traffic calming requests that are coming from our communities. Has there been any correlation, is there anybody on DOT who can speak to, has there been any correlation between the increase in traffic calming, traffic calming SRS that are coming in versus that decrease in how BPD is actually doing traffic enforcement? Is there any, is there anyone who can, has that come up in conversation?
So if I understand correctly, you're wanting to see some type, has there been any comparison with BPD's traffic enforcement?
There's been a decrease over the years in traffic enforcement. Have you guys looked at that or had a conversation about that correlating with why we're getting a ton of traffic calming increases within our neighborhoods? Has that been mentioned?
So Liam might have something. I don't, offhand, I don't recall there being anything with that specifically. The one thing I can say is that another reason we're seeing an uptick in the number of service requests is because we have a new traffic calming policy. So the way it was in the past, it was a little more rigorous, and you had to get sign-off and petitions and things like that for things to come through, whereas it's a different approach with the new policy. And so it makes it easier for communities, someone to request traffic calming, and then that potentially to go through the analysis process in traffic. And so once things are easier, then people are now submitting them. So I know that has been a factor in our numbers, but as far as anything more, I would turn, if Liam has any awareness, or, you know, Clea or Damian have anything additional to share.
Yeah, and I, I don't think we've drilled down the data with BPD. I think it's a conversation we're all, we're obviously willing to have. But as the Director said, I think the biggest factor recently with the spike is, as the Director said, the new policy, which opened it up. Like, the old policy was purposefully kind of difficult to navigate, to make the threshold to get approved for traffic calming hard, so that the agency wouldn't get crushed. We removed that, created a more transparent, easier standards to actually get approved for traffic calming, and that's why we're seeing the spike, as well as the pandemic. More people were working at home. So they were noticing driving behavior that they just weren't seeing because they're at home, you know, eight or nine hours longer than they were in the past per day. But for the BPD thing, I think it's a conversation we're willing to have.
Can you guys speak to more? You spoke on it a bit, but speak more about your partnership with BPD, specifically around oversized vehicles within our areas. A lot of times, these vehicles are coming at night. How are you guys coordinating with BPD on this? Because as a councilperson, I see a lot of inter-agency, throwing the ball back on who can do what. So talk to me about how you guys are working with BPD on a number of issues that both of you guys at times can do enforcement on.
Well, we did work with them on some abandoned vehicle efforts. We provided a, kind of a self-paced training slideshow that BPD provided to, I'm not sure if it's all, but at least some of their officers. So that essentially, when BPD is out there, should they find some vehicle that is potentially abandoned vehicle, then they know the correct process to go through and do that initial inspection. And then in that partnership, we agreed to then come back in that 48-hour timeframe and do the check to see the vehicle is still there. And then if so, then it would trigger some type, it would trigger the citation and then the SR so that it would be potentially towed. So we, we're, and I know that for some of the districts, and I don't know if Aretha might be speaking to this a little bit, but Aretha or Tina, but in some of the districts, I know that they, the staff, the chiefs have a really great relationship as well. So there's potentially some additional partnerships in those areas. I think that's...
Parking enforcement overnight, they're helpful. I think the Director mentioned abandoned vehicles is a big one. We, I'm on a lot of coordination meetings with BPD ahead of each weekend for some of like the nightlife districts, so crowd control. That's where we partner a lot. But I think there's, again, always room to explore other opportunities.
Also, just to add, our community engagement team is in communication with the neighborhood services officers to focus on certain hotspots. And then the liaisons themselves are also doing some neighborhood scans. So especially if there's, if BPD has raised concerns about a particular community, safety concerns, other things like that, then we're focusing on some of those from a hotspot standpoint and trying to do a little bit more enforcement.
For late-night enforcement, how many folks do y'all have working your late-night shift? Or is that also something where someone can get overtime for?
So, so currently, we do not have an overnight shift. The TEOs will potentially work until, I think, 10 or 11 o'clock, 11 o'clock, thank you, Taiwan. And so that overnight coverage, that's where we were talking with BPD more so, if they're out there and they have the ability to do some of that initial inspections, that kind of helps us, so that we're not having to take people off of the day shift and have them working the overnight hours. There was, you know, I know in one of the, I think, one of the hearings or something, there was some question about what it would take to posture up an overnight crew, and so we provided that information from a budget standpoint. But that's not, that's not something that's necessarily approved and in the works to establish right now. But we're trying to find ways to help with that overnight enforcement without having a dedicated crew.
I just know, not just within my district, but within other districts as well, I wanted to see what that collaboration is, because particularly, we're having issues with enforcement overnight. And again, it's, we'll have a discussion. Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. I want to bring some other insight to this. The administration has made a clear-cut commitment to me this budget cycle that by the end of this fiscal year, there will be an overnight enforcement shift. So that, to my knowledge, is a clear-cut commitment, that we're going to have an overnight enforcement shift by the end of this fiscal year. And if anybody thinks otherwise, I'd like to hear an update to that commitment that was made to me. Second, I recently reviewed the response given to me during my, from my questions during the budget, specifically regarding overnight enforcement conducted by BPD. And I was given no evidence that BPD is doing any overnight enforcement whatsoever. And I had specifically made the inquiry because there was a request from the Deputy Mayor for Public Safety, Deputy Mayor Barxdale, specifically to have BPD conduct late-night enforcement for commercial vehicles in particular. And I specifically requested during the budget, because I had been asking for months and receiving no response from BPD, I specifically asked during the budget to receive any account of any overnight commercial vehicle parking enforcement being conducted by BPD. And the response that I received and reviewed last week showed no evidence of BPD conducting any late-night parking enforcement whatsoever. For clarification, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that clarification, Councilman Dorsey. We are going to close out if, no questions? Okay. So I want to thank everybody for joining us today. The committee is going to reconvene its legislative oversight hearing quarterly, its legislative oversight hearings quarterly, to continue this important discussion. This hearing is now in recess. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, so it's still good morning, it's still morning. Um, good morning. This meeting of the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment and Technology Committee is now called to order. Danielle McCray, Councilwoman for the Second District and Chair of the Committee. In attendance for this hearing, we have Councilman John Bullock of the Ninth District. Thank you. We have Councilman Ron Dorsey of the Third District. We have Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the Tenth District. As well as Preston Lewis from the Council President's Office and Nina Themelis, um, from the Mayor's Office as well. Um, also, we are welcoming Trey Hayes, who is now staffed to the committee. Um, before we get started for this hearing, we are going to, I'm going to ask everybody to turn off with silence your cell phones. Um, we're going to be holding our hearing today for quarterly legislative oversight hearing Department of Public Works. That's going to be L O two-two dash zero zero one nine. And we're going to start representatives from the Department of Public Works. And then I'm going to give committee members the opportunity to ask any questions after that presentation. Um, for DPW, you guys can start at this time with your presentation when you're ready.
Great, thank you, Chairwoman McCray. My name is Richard Luna. I'm the interim director of the Department of Public Works. Um, thank you for having us today. Uh, we have a couple of members that'll be doing a presentation. We can go to the next slide just to give you, uh, agenda of the overview. Um, because we do have a number of new faces, we would like to, um, have our executive leadership team introduce themselves. And then following that, we'll have some HR updates and then updates from the two bureaus. Um, before we do introductions, I just wanted to say, uh, it's an honor to be in this position. I want to thank Mayor Scott, um, for, for appointing me in this position on an interim basis. Um, but we have tremendous momentum within the Department of Public Works, and we have an amazing staff, many of them you see behind us as well too, here with us today, that'll talk about a number of different projects and a number of different initiatives that we are continuing with, um, throughout this fiscal year. And we look forward to sharing those, um, successes with you as well during this presentation. So if we go to the next slide, we can see, uh, this is our executive leadership team. And so based off of the photos that you see here on, on the screen, if we could start with Mr. Sayen, uh, to do a quick introduction, just so you see who's presenting to you today.
Good morning, I'm Paul Sayen, the acting bureau head for the Bureau of Water and Wastewater.
Good morning, I'm Craig Jeter, acting, uh, bureau head for solid waste.
Good morning, I'm Deepthi Moda, I'm the Chief Administrative Officer.
Good morning, Latoya Curtis, Acting Chief of Staff.
Sorry. Good morning, Chair and Honorable Members of the Council, Darnell Lingham, General Counsel and Chief Compliance Officer.
And Mark Amerix, the other member of our executive leadership team. I believe that many of you have met him before, he's unable to join us today. Uh, which, uh, we'll also have Marshall Collins with us, um, who's overseeing our Legislative Affairs Office. Uh, so with that, we can jump right into the presentation. I think it's starting with, um, Ms. Moda.
All right, I'm going to provide a quick update as it relates to HR. Um, as it relates to the hiring for the weekly recycling, we're currently focusing on filling all our vacancies in our solid waste bureau on September. September ninth, we're hosting a job fair at the C C Jackson Recreation Center to target and fill the newly added vacancies, uh, the solid waste drivers and the solid waste workers. And subsequently, we plan on onboarding these folks in October slash November to ensure that they have the trainings and the resources to be successful in their positions. Next slide. In addition to a September job fair, we're also hosting, uh, participating in job fairs at Morgan State and at, uh, U B to target and fill our vacancies in our admin bureau. Example, in accounting and I T, in our water and wastewater bureaus, um, some of our lab and engineer vacancies as well. Next slide. In addition to partnership, partnering with local universities, we're also trying to strengthen our partnerships with local firms like N C I A, Turnaround Tuesday, Center for Urban Families, to create sustainable pipelines for our entry-level positions and our C D L driver vacancies. Next slide. Internally, we're focusing on our people managers to ensure they have the tools and resources to be successful in their roles by providing them trainings such as accountability in the workplace, which basically focuses on how to hold your employees accountable and provides refresher trainings on city policies and procedures. We're also focusing on the newly appointed people managers and plan on launching a leadership academy in, in fall that basically goes over the entire employee lifecycle from on, onboarding to offboarding. And lastly, we're continuing to focus on our internal programs such as Be More Wise and Y H two O and continue to introduce the water and wastewater field as a career path to our underemployed residents and our youth. Next slide.
So our goal to resume weekly recycling require, uh, two resources, uh, crews and equipment. Um, our crew positions are to increase from sixty-five to eighty-five solid waste drivers and one hundred and eighty-one to two hundred and twenty-one solid waste workers. Uh, funds for these crews are coming from our general fund budget and, uh, AWPer funds. Uh, these two resources will be put to routine services at the capacity to resume weekly recycling. Um, we've got a total of ninety-eight trucks have been ordered for, by D G S for routine services. Um, we will have, uh, s- in July, I think, five of them came, five sixteen-yard rail loader packers came in, I'm sorry, were put out of service rather, out of the eighty units that we ordered. Um, in addition, we have three more front loaders coming. That should be delivered in November of this year. And seven, eight-yard mini packers, um, delivered in October of this year. As of today, though, those trucks that were scheduled to be, uh, arrive in October will actually be here in two weeks. So, uh, we're about thirty days ahead of schedule with, uh, the mini packers. Also, uh, solid wastes is, uh, we're two percent less in our service requests versus F Y I, uh, twenty twenty-three, um, resulted in about six thousand less, uh, service requests closed. Um, we have less service requests created will lead to fewer, uh, service requests closed. Uh, we created three hundred and twelve thousand service requests in twenty twenty-three, three hundred and twenty-six thousand in, uh, twenty twenty-two, which means that we're four percent less service requests created in twenty twenty-three, resulting in anywhere from, uh, fourteen thousand less. Uh, we did see an increase in proactive service request closures related to graffiti removal, um, alley proactiveness and dirty street proactiveness. So our, the intent of our ten-year solid waste management plan is to provide an accurate description of the solid waste management system in the city and a ten-year outlook on planned solid waste and recycling activities in compliance with, uh, Maryland regulations. Our ten-year solid waste management plan is required by Maryland, uh, Department of Environment, and the contents are dictated by COMAR. Um, beginning in December of twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, B S W had a, has led, led a team of city agency stakeholders and technical assistants to update the ten-year solid waste management plan. The state just consists of four stages, um, at sixty percent, ninety percent, uh, ninety-nine percent, and final drafts, including public meetings and comment periods at each stage. In May, B S W submitted the draft plan to M D E for feedback and edits, and M D E responded with several minor technical edits. Uh, our safety program includes daily, uh, pre and post-trip inspections of our vehicles, regular safety meetings, safety trainings for employees, um, active shooter training, supervisor monitoring for the wearing by employees of P P E. Um, we have three sites that are undergoing improvements to meet safety and health codes and standards. That's our Eastern Sanitation Yard, Reed Bird Yard and Kane Street. Uh, these sites are to receive a comprehensive safety and health assessment. From this assessment, um, immediate minor repairs will be completed and longer-term renovations planned for the, planned for construction. Currently, contractors begin to coordinate the assessment of hazardous material to review of codes and regulations. Um, recent improvements, we've got, uh, new guard booths were installed at three convenience center locations, uh, Bowley's, Reed Bird and Sisson Street. This improvement provides shelter and shade for the convenience center staff. Um, truck and equipment lot was paved at Bowley's Lane site. New tile flooring and painted walls at our marine operations site. Um, this improves the cleanliness and appearance of the work environment. Uh, Crescent Street bathrooms were installed, new security fence and cameras were installed, and the roof was repaired. Uh, these projects improve condition, safety, security for property management employees and visitors. Uh, capital improvement project for East Side Transfer Station. Uh, the purpose of this project was to design and bid and construct a second transfer station at Bowley's Lane Yard. Um, construction provides an additional location for small haulers to drop off, uh, materials and increase capacity for city trash and recycling disposals. This project involves the design and construction of various structures and facilities on an existing landfill that was closed in nineteen eighty-four. Um, D P W has contracted with, uh, the environmental engineering firm, uh, R A R M Group. Uh, the initial assessment found nine acres that are available for development of a transfer station. The plans for a transfer station include small hauler drop-off area. Disposals are for city load packers and a citizens, uh, convenience center.
That's it?
Yep, that's it.
All right, uh, so just moving over to water and wastewater, um, just to, um, talk a little bit about an incident that we had, uh, recently last month, uh, the Cromwell Pump Station. Um, yes, it was, uh, um, an, an incident that, uh, unexpected, but it's actually a story of success. And that's what I want to share with you over the next minute or so. So, um, back in, uh, July thirteenth, we had our, a fire at, at our pump station. Um, and because of that, uh, because of that incident, electrical service to the station was shut down, which meant the whole station was shut down. Um, over the next twelve days, uh, we assessed the pump station, um, did repairs to the pump motors and to the valving system, uh, at the station. Um, and on July twenty-sixth, uh, less than, less than two weeks afterwards, we restored partial, uh, operation to that station. Um, and a great success to, to the team, the D P W team, as well as our partners, private partners, and our, uh, partners at the Baltimore County and Howard County, uh, with the voluntary water restrictions. Um, it's quite an amazing, uh, turnaround in such a short time. Um, and then we're looking at, uh, assessing when we can lift those voluntary, um, restrictions. Uh, we're up to two pumps now, um, and hopefully, uh, um, we'll have some news at some point in the future, in the near future. Um, just moving to the next slide, please. So over at Druid Lake in Ashburn, our underground water storage tanks. Um, as we all know, those, uh, those tanks have been in construction for, uh, for a while now. We're, are getting, uh, close to the finish line. Um, so over at Druid Lake, um, we have an administrative order with the deadline of December thirtieth of this year. We are on track to get substantial completion, or I'm, I'm sorry, functional use of that tank, uh, by that time. Um, and then we'll, uh, finish off the restoration sometime in the summer of twenty twenty-four. Over at the Ashburn tank, um, that administrative order deadline is November thirtieth of this year. Again, we are on track to hit that date, uh, with our, um, functional use. And then, again, restoration's going to take us into the summer of twenty-four. Next slide, please. Okay, over at, uh, Tiffany Run, this is, uh, the sinkhole, uh, near, uh, the Montebello Treatment Plant. Um, so, um, we've been in, uh, construction and repair of the eighty-four inch line that, uh, that, uh, uh, was damaged from that, uh, from that sinkhole, um, for a while now. Um, so recently, we've done some, uh, we've noticed some, uh, ground settlement and movement in the area, in those, uh, in that excavation area. Um, so some potential ground settlement, um, that we have had the contractor or, uh, start doing some, uh, testing, uh, geotechnical testing to, uh, identify the cause of that, uh, movement, uh, settlement, and then make, uh, recommendations on additional soil stabilization, um, so that we can complete that, uh, uh, that repair work. Um, so that's where we are right now. The, they are, the investigation was just finished last week, and we're just waiting for those recommendations and then an assessment on, uh, any further, uh, work to stabilize the soil.
The Maryland State Water Utilities Assistance Grant, the city was awarded fifteen point eight seven million. The Maryland State Water Utilities Assistance Grant, the city was awarded fifteen point eight seven million dollars on April twenty-seventh to assist residents who have, who low-income residents who have incurred, um, water billing debt through the pandemic. And that timeframe covers January of twenty twenty through September of twenty twenty-two. Um, we received the grant money on June twenty-seventh of this year, and the B O E approved our distribution of those funds, um, on August the second. The funds are scheduled to be distributed by the, by the September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three to, um, credits to, um, our residents. Next slide, please. So priority one, the state, um, criteria was to provide these low, these low-income credits. So for priority one, we are giving credits to residents who qualify for our low assistance programs. That's the L I W A P, the Low Income Housing Water Assistance Program, Water for All, and our, excuse me, V H two O. This excludes any multifamily dwellings that are owned by companies. Once we complete the credits on priority one, we move on to priority two, which are those residents who qualify for low-income housing. And that list we will receive from Baltimore City Housing and Community Development. From there, we will move on to provide credits to residents who are in the qualified census tract and those zip codes, and we will apply those, those credits in ascending order. Again, this is for residential customers only, and anyone, um, who was in multifamily would not qualify for those grants. Next slide.
And so Chairman McCray and Council, that does conclude our presentation. Just on that last item there, on the grant assistance, uh, just to put that in context, that's twenty million that was available for the entire state, and Baltimore received fifteen point eight million of that available funding. That's eighty percent of what was available for the entire state. So just great work by the team and a true testament to, to how much those, those funds were needed for, for our residents and customers. Uh, with that, we'll conclude the presentation, but happy to take, uh, and answer any questions you may have.
I'm going to start with the, um, I'm going to start with the questions, and thank you all for the presentation. I want to go straight to the Maryland Water Assistance Program. You did highlight that we did receive, our city did receive the bulk of the funds. Um, we have until, as you stated, nine twenty-seven of this year to get these funds out. There are three different groups, um, that you are prioritizing. My first question is, do we have a total number? Or do you guys have a total number of how many accounts would be impacted, which he, within each priority, a total number, and then the number for each priority group? Do you have that at this time?
Uh, the total number is going to be over twenty thousand. We're still, uh, the team is actually working on that behind the scenes as we speak right now. Um, so we are getting those final details together, but as soon as we have that full breakdown, we're happy to provide that to you. But at least right now, what we're looking at is over twenty thousand customers that would qualify to receive some assistance.
If someone is not captured within one of those priority groups, but they should be captured, how, what fail-safes do you guys have in place, um, to mitigate? Maybe we're missing somebody from one of these groups out of the twenty thousand.
I think what we've recognized through this process is, one, there's just tremendous need to help out, um, residents and customers, especially those that fell behind during the pandemic period. Um, so this grant is very specific in what time period this applies to. Um, and so there's going to be more customers and more residents out there that did not meet those criteria on the three groups. Um, but there's other programs for them to take advantage of. Water for All is a, a tremendous program for us, and we've given out three million dollars so far in credits. Um, earlier this year, we, we partnered with Promise Pay. Uh, Promise Pay is a, is a third-party vendor that we've been utilizing that is, um, doing a little bit more proactive outreach to customers. And so they reach out directly to customers and let them know about payment plan assistance. They let them know about Water for All. They let them know about L I W A P and other additional outside funding sources so that they could take advantage of. And so as they're connecting with residents through Promise Pay or through any of those other means, um, they're letting them know of what full breadth of options are available to them, and then they get them in the correct place or connected to the right staff to assist with that.
There is that criteria. There is set criteria. So, say someone is in priority three, and they may be considered a low-income household within a certain census tract. Now, I'm asking this because I got some of these census tracts within my district, and I want to make sure that my residents who can get this funding, that they do receive it. So, if someone is supposed to be in the group, but they may not be included, what mechanisms do we have? If say something comes to our office, or what can a customer do if they don't get the letter or the notification or the credit automatically applied to their bill, and they should be in one of these groups?
Right, so the, the criteria through this program is set through the state, and so there is a limited number of funds that we can apply. One of the caveats of the program, too, is we have to pay off the full outstanding balance to customers during a set criteria during the pandemic. And so, just through that caveat or that specification and how we award these grants, that does limit the number of people that could receive any form of assistance through this $15 million. So, if I'm a customer and I have a $10,000 outstanding balance, that whole $10,000 would get paid off, and then you go to the next person on the list. If the program itself was designed differently, you essentially could disperse those funds to more people, but that's just not the way that the state designed this program and how it works. And so, for those customers that do not, aren't, are not able to, to receive the full credit and pay off of their outstanding balance, that's the additional programs that we have. That's what I'm talking about when in terms of Water for All, LIWAP, and other funding assistance that's out there that they may be able to take advantage of.
Out of the prioritization groups, what's the average amount of a delinquent water bill right now that could get assistance from this fund? Do you guys have like the average water bill amount that's not paid off that would qualify for this program?
We could include that in the breakdown as, as we're getting those numbers to the council. Like I mentioned, staff is actually working behind the scenes as we speak on, on going through the list, ensuring that everybody's captured. So, we can, once that is finalized, then we, yes, we can provide those summary and level detail to you all.
Okay. When, when are you guys like realistically going to have that information finalized? I'm going to put it in as a committee request, but I want to make sure we're giving you a reasonable time to get the information back to us.
I would say within two weeks. That, that was our internal goal, was to have all of the customers identified within the next two weeks.
Okay, so we're going to, Mr. Hayes will reach out within the next two weeks just to follow up, to see what, to see if we can get this information. I'm going to move on to, to staff, and right now, what's the, what's the agency's current vacancy rate?
We'll get back to you on it. It's roughly between, it's around 23%. We can send the definite numbers.
So, typically, you guys, you do come with this, you do come with this information. Do you have the information? If I go through the normal breakdown that I go through, do you guys have any of that information readily available right now? Say, I say Bureau of Solid Waste, how many vacancies do you have for solid waste workers? The CDL driver one, CDL driver two? How many vacancies do we have for laborers? Do you have that information right now, or is that something you got to get back to us on, too?
We don't have it handy on us right now, but we can get back to you. But Solid Waste, as compared to any other large agency, their vacancy rate is below 10%.
Okay, so let me, I'm going to give you the committee request. The exact overall agency vacancy rate for the Bureau of Solid Waste, vacancy rates for solid waste workers, CDL driver one, CDL driver two, vacancies for our laborers, for the Bureau of Water and Wastewater, CDL driver one, laborers, CDL driver two.
And Chairman Cray, if I could add as well, too, on the solid waste positions, you will see some of those numbers slightly inflated. We did, and thank you to the council as well, too, through the budget process, got the additional crews that are going to help stabilize routine services. Those positions are funded for half the year, half the fiscal year, so those essentially would not be able to be filled until closer to January. Yeah.
For these numbers, I'm just going to say, hey, we, we, we in here quarterly now. We weren't in here because of the budget hearing last year, so I'll just say if you guys could be prepared with these numbers for each hearing, for each quarterly hearing that we have. I'm going to turn it over to, I'm actually going to welcome, I'm not sure if I acknowledged you, so I apologize if I didn't, Councilman James Torrance. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to add to your committee request related to the water assistance funds. I just want to make sure that we, in writing, that we've confirmed with DCHD that we're not accounting for persons who are residents that actually aren't residents. So, whether it's owner-occupied or whether or not it's a vacant property, so we can reference it against our vacant building notices, because what I don't want to do is apply money to a building where no one is actually physically living in, where we can actually assist someone that we know lives in the building who needs that assistance. I just want to be clear that the data has to be validated so that when we apply that credit, that it is going to someone who actually lives in Baltimore, pays taxes in Baltimore, and is actively looking to engage and be a part of Baltimore. I just want to make sure that we have that documented as a committee request and identify in an Excel sheet who those persons were, so that we know that you actually did that work.
Now, Councilman Torrance, that's a great point, yes. So, we are actually doing that level of detailed work and looking, ensuring that these funds are actually getting applied to residents that are owner-occupied versus those that may be owned by separate entities or, my apologies, I keep trying to look at you, but other outside businesses outside the city. So, yes, we are looking at that level of detail, and we'll provide the council as much detailed information as we can.
And then are we validating with DCHD whether or not the, whether, if it is owner-occupied, whether that person is still a living person as well? That is also an issue that we ran in with data with DCHD. It was not compared to the state records for persons who have recently been deceased as well. Just want me to make sure it's clear.
Okay.
Next, I want to go back to an oversight issue that I do have that is still continuing, which is related to the Office of Engineering and Construction and your resident inspectors. I have a committee request for, it will be for Project 1275, which is off of Hilton Parkway. I would like to know, I would like three months of your inspection reports from May to now. Actually, no, I'm going to do May to now. I think that's a total of almost four months of inspection reports. The reason why is because, as I alerted to you last week, particularly with your projects, that the resident inspectors have not been present, and I just want to make sure that when we are using water utility funds, that the road waste that our, our residents are accessing are actually too great, and we're not finding actual projects and adding more money on to how much it costs to put an actual water main or new pipes into the ground because the oversight is not there from that office. In addition to the, I would like to, again, reiterate training for those inspectors with the street cuts team from DOT. I just want to make sure that there is a crosswalk with their training for that, as well as get updates on their safety training, given the fatality that I had on Falls Road as well. Outside of that, my general question is, it's going to go back to the SOS program in terms of where are we with that, in terms of identifying ways that we can allow more, more residents to access this. Have we thought about how to make that more accessible to residents?
Thank you, Councilmember Torrance. We got the information on your, the original request, so we'll be following up with staff on that. Regarding the building backups and capacity-related building backups events, we have started sending out additional contacts or, or program information through our existing channels, just to make sure that people are aware of the programs that do exist. And I just wanted to point out as well, too, that per the modified consent decree, there are strict stipulations on what qualifies as a capacity-related building backup event, and we do have a program in place that does address those specific requirements as part of the MCD. But like I mentioned, we recently started sending out, you know, program materials, information, flyers to our community organizations that are connected with DPW, and we'll continue that effort as well, too, throughout this year.
And have we updated? I do know from the budget hearing, we did have a request about the modeling, because I am still dealing with a constituent who was experiencing backups, who from 311 reports was on notice, that we were on notice for the fact that there were potential backups would occur. So, I'm, I'm really want to have a conversation with you modeling persons about how we're strategically using that modeling to then proactively go and look forward to, and not just wait for someone to submit a 311. So, as a committee request, I would like a meeting with you guys to discuss that, but also want to update the committee after we have that conversation on what changes you're going to make internally to actually meet that demand, because what I'm finding is that there's, there's a difference between adding it to my water bill and mailing me, and then actually it happening and I not know about it, and especially since we're going to paper lists as well. And that's the goal, was to go to paper lists to save money for the citizens of Baltimore, but how do we make sure that when we do that modeling, we're proactively informing people as well?
Yeah, so happy to set up that meeting with you and then do the follow-ups, and, and yeah, we'll work with your office to get that scheduled.
Thank you, and I yield back to the chair.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to step, I'm going to start from the end and step back two steps real quick to let you know where I'm coming from. I have sidewalks and streets that are improperly restored by DPW that are unrestored for extended, extended periods, some of which I have been trying to get repaired since I took office at the end of 2016. Notably, sidewalks where meter vaults were replaced when we made the switch from analog to digital meters, and where the permanent sidewalk restoration was never done, where we had had to dig out meter vaults. Two of them are on Hartford Road, a block apart from one another. I have been trying to get them fixed since I took office. Clearly, DPW's responsibility to get this done. I can't seem to get the right person to do the thing. There are three other different kinds of circumstances where DPW has done work and should be doing restoration, and I think that the different circumstances may mean that it's somebody difference responsibility in each of these different, different circumstances, whether that's Office of Engineering and Construction or UMD. It's unclear which circumstance is the right person and who I should be going to, even after seven years in this office, who I should be going to to try to get the work done and done expeditiously. I'll step back and say, that's harder because it's really under, hard to know and keep track of who is in which division, and I'll step one back, back one step farther and say, that's made even diff, more difficult because almost nobody that I receive communications with has a proper signature set up in their email. Latoya, you have a perfect email signature. As the administrative officer, could you please make a request that all the chiefs and assistant chiefs and superintendent, and assistant superintendents have their inbox set up properly so that I know what division they are in, what their position is within the department, within division, so that I can just understand who I'm communicating with and what, and then, and then how can I get a sense of who to go to for these various circumstances? I can break down the circumstances, I can send them to somebody in an email so that we can triage this together, but I have a list of like a half a dozen or a dozen different restorations that are long, long overdue that I would really like to get resolved.
Councilman Dorsey, thank you for that, for that information and the additional contacts there, as well, too. Paul Sayen is our acting bureau head over Water and Wastewater. He will be your primary point of contact for, for engaging with you in, in your office and looking at those specific locations.
Councilman Balak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This question, it kind of dovetails a little bit into what Councilman Torrance was getting to as it relates to assistance programs, but I wanted to get a little bit deeper, particularly as it relates to the sewage backups. I know we have that program that's in place as it related to wet weather, and then there is the, the push to have this also be related to city infrastructure, and I know there was the, the communication between Environmental Protection Agency, Maryland Department of the Environment. Can you talk about that plan and where it is now in terms of the expansion? Is that already in place, or what does that look like?
So, yeah, so the SOS program is currently in place, and that would be the program as well that we're moving forward. Like I mentioned in my earlier comments, it does have set criteria in terms of the modified consent decree, in terms of what is a qualifying event for capacity-related events, and then residents also have that same option as well, too, for anything that's outside of what is a qualifying event under the modified consent decree requirements to engage with the city's law department, to file a claim with the city. But like I mentioned, that program itself, we, we've recently started sending out additional information to our constituent groups and those that are connected with DPW in order to share that information with them, and all, all the resources as well are available on our website.
Sorry, so all, so all of that is, so you've already responded to the EPA and Department of the Environment with that information?
That's correct.
Okay, and then how does that information get, again, back to Councilman Torrance's point, how, how does that get shared not only with constituents, but also with us in terms of what those qualifying events are? Because I could see how that could be, you know, quite confusing to determine what's a qualifying event and how you perceive from that point.
Yeah, the team has some robust, the team has some robust materials, marketing materials that go out directly to residents, but what we can do as well, too, is send those over to your offices so that you have the latest information, so that your offices can be sharing that as well through newsletters or as you're talking with different constituent groups as well. And so, we're, we're happy to provide all of that information to you all.
And thank you, and just wanted to comment around that. As you can imagine, I'm sure you all know, I mean, it's a very traumatic experience to go through, and at that moment, it's kind of hard to keep all your ducks in a row and trying to figure out where to go for what. So, again, if we had that, that information more handy and more available, that, that'd be great, so appreciate that work.
Of course, and, and just, just to want to highlight this, if a, if a resident is experiencing an issue, their first line is to call 311. 311 would be the best first call to make. Then that gets through the system, that gets assigned to appropriate staff to go out and do those investigations, and then our field investigation crews as well have those handout materials available to them so that they can engage directly with that resident.
Thank you.
Your agency and the administration made a commitment on when weekly recycling will resume. Can you talk to us about where we're at and what progress has been made so far?
Yeah, so DGS is our partner agency in terms of ordering new trucks and vehicles, specifically of upgrading our full fleet for routine services. Back to Slide 11 that we had presented to during this presentation, five of those trucks are, are, we have received out of the, the total of our 80 vehicles that were in that group, and then we have additional trucks that are essentially getting staggered and delivered over the next few months. The bulk majority of trucks that is going to help this city get to weekly recycling, that's a 30-order truck, those are set to be delivered sometime in early 2024. So, that's why we're still using the, the quarter line of calendar year 2024 as a target date. We're still continuously working with DGS and with the vendor to solidify what delivery date those trucks would arrive, and then like we also mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, starting next month, we'll actually start the recruitment effort to be able to fill those new crew positions that are going to be dedicated to routine services. That's the 20 drivers and the over 40 labor positions that were funded as part of this recent budget adoption process.
At this moment, you guys are on time to meet the commitment. I believe it says some time within the first quarter.
That's correct.
The next thing I want to get into is more so, actually, let me get back to staffing. At a recent hearing, or I'll say at a previous hearing, the agency stated that it had been working with Mercy to increase the allotment of pre-employment screenings in order to get enough people through the pipeline to get them pre-qualified, get them in positions as soon as possible. Representatives at that hearing stated that the agency would be tracking the three critical vacancy positions over the next few weeks to evaluate progress. Has increasing the allotment of pre-employment screenings had any type of impact on filling vacancies? had any type of impact on filling vacancies?
Yes and no. It's a mixed bag. When we provide you the data, we can show, we can provide you the data on how many folks we've hired so far. But just because we have Mercy slots doesn't mean folks pass the physical. People still do get deferred when they have to go through an employment physical. But we can definitely provide you the data on how many folks we've hired.
I guess when it was presented to us, it meant when you guys were doing it, we could get people through the pipeline faster. And are you saying that you guys aren't able to necessarily track if that adjustment is getting folks through the pipeline faster?
We are tracking it. We can definitely provide that data on how fast people are moving. But when people do go to Mercy, they, as I stated, they have to pass a physical.
Right.
And sometimes they do get deferred. So that still creates a bottleneck for us sometimes in the hiring process.
Okay, I look, I look forward to the information that you're able to provide on that. Like I said in the DOT oversight hearing, a lot of these questions are coming from a place of what we all know that within city government, within our city workforce is what I'll say, over 50% of folks can retire today. So it's just top of mind for me. So that's why I'm on these staffing questions. I'm actually going to shift to waste diversion. I had a couple of questions for Ms. Hussein, if she's, if she's here or if somebody's here that can answer the, answer the waste diversion questions. It was previously uplifted that we would be overseeing waste diversion activities, working with area universities, that the zero-waste manager, excuse me, would be overseeing the waste diversion activities, working with our area universities and hospitals on ways to compost and bolster sustainability activities. I wanted to know at this time, have you begun partnering with our area universities and hospitals? And what does that partnership look like if so?
Thank you for the question. Yes, we recently received funding through the USDA to partner with universities to establish additional food scrap drop-off locations on their campuses.
And I'm sorry, like, we, we know your name. Can you just give your name and your title?
Yes, Sophia Hussein, Zero Waste Manager for the Office of Waste Diversion. And so yes, that is our immediately planned program that we have with universities right now is to expand the food scrap drop-off locations onto their campuses. They will be five new food scrap drop-off locations between Loyola, Hopkins, and UMB. Two each at Hopkins and UMB, and then one at Loyola. So that is our immediate partnership right now. Previously, there was a working group called the Baltimore Food Waste Reduction Working Group that was consisted primarily of like eds and meds and universities. We're in the process of reimagining the way that that group looks to include more stakeholders. And so we are currently gathering participants for what we are hoping will be the next iteration of this collaborative group called the Zero Waste Coalition that will consist of like several subgroups working on various issues like university composting or, you know, getting consistency in acceptable materials across compost haulers in the city, et cetera. So that is in a planning phase right now. In our last two newsletters, we have sent out forums to gather, gather interested parties to continue those partnerships.
I'm going to talk about some, some common sense, some common sense things when it comes to waste diversion. Where are we at with education? What progress has been made regarding education? What I'm seeing daily within my neighborhoods, with my community organizations, with residents are saying and what we see? People still don't know what to recycle, what not to recycle. We're still putting plastic bags with recyclables in the, in the containers. What progress has DPW made as far as educating residents? What plans do you have to educate residents so we can all tackle this contamination rate? Especially before we get back to weekly recycling?
Definitely, yeah. So in the lead-up to weekly recycling, we are putting together a five-year communications plan that will hopefully deliver consistent messaging over a long period of time. And part of, we are investigating different methods and avenues to do that, making sure that we are going to equitably be able to reach all residents. So we're looking at different applications that we could use. We're looking at updating the website's Recycle Right tool. We rebranded our newsletter to do more of this type of education work. So now our office newsletter is beyond recycling, On the Road to Zero Waste, where we're talking every month about what is recyclable, what's not recyclable, and the reasons why, trying to build that trust with residents that the materials they're putting out at their curbside are in fact recycled. So we're, while the strategy, while the communications plan is not solid right now, we're in the process of forming it, we are prioritizing that education and outreach as the way to not only reduce contamination, but increase the amount that we're recycling and hopefully also get at some of the nuisance issues that we see with, you know, dumping or people improperly placing materials in our, in our immediate environment. So I can definitely keep you updated on the progress with that plan.
I have an additional question before I just turn it back over to my colleagues. This is regarding our food scrap locations. I'm very excited that you said we're looking to open additional food scrap locations across some of our universities and in different areas. As of a recent hearing, we had a number for how much, how many pounds of our food scraps have been diverted from the landfill. Do you have an updated number for our convenience centers? Also for the, the Two Farmers Markets location?
I can get you that number for the convenience centers. For the Two Farmers Market locations, we ceased collecting data when the pandemic hit. So we don't have by customer data, but we do have like an average of the amount diverted. And I believe I can get that too as well. That, that program is in the process of transitioning over from sustainability.
If I can get that updated number as a committee request, the, a follow-up to that is, what's the current feasibility of our city starting a curbside composting pickup? I know that, look, I know we had some challenges. I know we're trying to get back to weekly recycling. But what's the feasibility of us starting a curbside composting pickup? Or has that conversation even started yet?
Madam Chair, let me answer that. We would need to do, I think, a study. We also probably need to get some engagement from our residents. A food compost pickup per home, it can be done, but it takes a lot of planning. That is something that you just don't want to haphazardly put together. You don't want to leave food compost on the street and have an issue with service. Or you want to make sure you got your ducks lined up in a row before you go down, go down that road. But it is something that I'm glad to hear you talk about. And we can look into a program of how to get that started, and we'll get back with you.
What I would love to see, at least, look, I know this is not something you could just roll out, and I agree with you. If we do something, we want to make sure we do it right. But I want to see a pilot. I want to see us continuously looking to how we can get everyone involved in waste diversion, and composting is just an easy way. Other cities and municipalities, counties within the state, they're rolling out these programs. So I think we can at least get a pilot or just start figuring that out. Thank you for your response. Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to go back to diversion as well. I introduced a resolution some time ago about when persons are actually evicted from homes and rental properties, how we as a city can actually store those actual items so that they're not put in our landfills, not brought to our waste stations. I think it's the humane thing to do, but environmentally the best thing to do as well. So I just want to know where we are, where we stand with actually bringing that pilot back? Because at one time, we were storing them in the city warehouse.
I'm going to jump in because I've been around for a while. Yeah, we spent many years debating what to do with eviction chattel. It used to be that landlords had the sheriff come over. They would take one object to the curb, and then everything went to the curb and sat there. And DPW was expected to pick up the eviction chattel. It created a lot of issues in neighborhoods. People would pick through the eviction chattel and, you know, take what they wanted. So there was a period of time in which we stored eviction chattel at the request of the tenants who were being evicted at our, what we call our down-under yard. And they were stored in the, in a large shipping container. Out of all that storage that we would do, less than five people were able to ever pick up the chattel. And the issue is around people not having places to live that are affordable, number one. Number two, when they're evicted, they're in a really bad place and may not have a place to go. Number three, many of them don't have the ability of the vehicles or a truck or a person to help them to maintain their chattels. And so it was later determined that chattels could not be put in the right way anymore and that the landlords were at that time supposed to hold them until the time was for the eviction to be fully realized. They were supposed to store them on-site. I suspect that didn't happen often. In exchange, the city said they would accept the unclaimed chattels could be dumped for free if they could show the eviction chattel order, the eviction order. That is kind of a rough history of it. Our, our people, when we had to pick up these chattels, were put in a very difficult position because people are upset and they're going through a bad time. And the person who comes there to pick up that, that material would get the brunt of the frustration. And that was really hard on our folks. So I'm of the opinion, this is my personal opinion, not my department's position, that putting chattel out on the sidewalk is not the way to go. But I don't know that Department of Public Works is, should be the keeper of people's possessions in the hope somebody is able to work out their finance, find a place to live, be able to pick it up, and retrieve their possessions. It's a very difficult thing to do. So we never had it in a warehouse. It was in storage containers at the down-under yard. And at that time, very few people reclaimed their possessions. There was a period of time. So it's, it's, I personally don't see it as a DPW problem. I see it as a tenant landlord problem. And that has been the back and forth we've had in the past on that issue.
I will tell you, as a person who was formerly homeless and a person who represents people who have those actual chattels stored in the vacant properties and buildings behind them, that is an everyone's problem. I'm just going to be frank. I'll put like this, either we can come to an agreement on how we're going to move forward with it, or I'm just going to legislate a new change. Innovation is not something that we just stick with. History is not something. As someone who was a former employer of DPW as well, I know that we can be imaginative and change it. Because how do we get the single stream recycling? It took people nine months of thinking hard how not to lay off people, but also create a new system. And it took a while to get there. We got there. And I just want to say that it's going to take fortitude to get there again, right? And I'm going to say this clearly. Either we figure out an innovative way in a collaborative approach, or I'm going to dictate in a legislative approach how you're going to do it next. I'm just being transparent and clear. The reason why is because we are in a crisis, whether or not we care about it or not. Just a few weeks ago, it was 100-degree weather in Baltimore City, right? Everything that we can do from an environmental perspective to a human nature perspective to recognize people's hardships, in addition to recognize that we are having waste dumped in alleyways, vacant homes and properties, we got to do something different to help curve all of this happening together in one cohesive way. While I think that we should not have to store it completely, there are foundations who actually provide people with furniture when they're starting over again, that if this person doesn't pick it up, maybe we can give it to them, right? To someone else who can benefit from it. That then saves the economy of persons who are collateral barred after they have issues with rental crises from having to think about the difference between a security deposit and actually having furniture to sleep on, right? I think that we can reimagine it. And I challenge the department and the city, as well as myself, to reimagine it in a way that we can do both. We can chew gum as well as walk down the street and treat people and humanize them and actually do the right thing to make sure that this waste in people's chattels don't end up in backyards or alleyways. But also, we're giving people a second chance. So I look forward to having conversations with you guys.
I respect that, and I thank you very much. And I think it's more a bigger problem than just our agency. Because I would rather not look at it as waste. It's people's possessions. Thank you.
Councilman Balak? Okay, I have a few more questions before we, before we get out of here. Director Luna, yourself and also Chief Ingram, is it Chief Ingram? Yeah, during FY, during a budget hearing, I just wanted to get the title right. During, during a budget hearing, you both spoke about the Office of Compliance, which I believe is under Ms. Chief Bowie-Branum, and some progress that you all were making. I just wanted to see if we can get an update on if some of those key hiring items went through. Within the last two months, what progress has been made around, I believe it was like the Office of Safety, but everything was under the Office of Compliance? If you could just give us an update on that one?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Daniel Ingram, General Counsel, Chief Compliance Officer. And part of my responsibility is to oversee the Office of Environmental Regulatory, Office of Environmental Regulatory Compliance and Safety, acronym IRCS. And it's managed by our chief, Andrew Bowie, Brendan Bowie. And some updates for your knowledge is, we've hired a safety manager. We recruited him from the federal government, and he's been working feverishly to develop a program. We will be working with one of our consultants, Atkins, to formalize and finalize the program to ensure that it's meeting institutional standards. The program that they have developed is called Safe and Sound. It's a model from OSHA to which we're going to be implementing. And just a point of reference, this week is Safety Week. And so Ms. Bowie will be hosting Lunch and Learn on Friday for DPW. We're going to be modeling a lot of our safety compliance inspection and what that program at its high level is, which we manage by Mr. Andre Henderson. Particularly for safety, we will be having a program where we'll be doing frequent pop-up as well as scheduled inspections for our 80-plus sites within DPW. Where we provide recommendations to the facility managers to make corrective action in anticipation before there's a motion investigation. We will be working with Mr. Steve Strickland, who is our chief operator officer that oversees our facilities and coordinating to ensure that we can address our low-hanging fruits first and dealing with capital improvements as well moving forward. In addition to, we will be doing safety inspections on the different industrial facilities, like our wastewater treatment plants and landfills, to ensure that our employees are safe. We will be pushing safety first. Safety first is one of our pillars here within DPW that is being pushed down from our, our esteemed director, Ms. Luna. And the executive leadership, we meet with our senior leadership every quarter to talk about safety, one, safety is one of our agenda items for safety, to really push safety first within DPW, to reimagine, to institutionalize safety, which will be managed by Andre Henderson. And then thereafter... And then thereafter, the program will be finalized through our consultant to then push down up and down the management chain during training. One recommendation that Ms. Bowie has recommended, that all supervisors and superintendents do OSHA training so that they are aware of their OSHA requirements and ensure that they're having those conversations daily with their staff. That's safety at a high level for an environmental regulatory compliance, which also Ms. Bowie managed. We are now in the process of recruiting one of our inspectors for environmental regulatory compliance. We're doing a heavy recruiting for a manager that will manage the day-to-day. So a plug, if anybody knows any engineers that are interested in working in environmental compliance, we are recruiting for that manager. And what we'll be doing, and we will be liaison with our regulators to understand what their concerns are so that we can work with our colleagues in DPW to address any non-compliance issues. We provide assistance. What that means is if there is a compliance issue, we coordinate with the engineers from engineering construction, as well as the plant managers, and also the leadership to discuss what our regulatory requirements are, what are our permits required, whether the law says, and this is how we institute it, and what are you doing to address it? We review any non-compliance notices to ensure that we are responding accordingly with action plans and schedules of completion. As we know from recent communications with our regulators, that was a concern, giving timelines of addressing it. And so we've been working through that. And this office was created through the leadership to ensure that what happened in the past with our agency doesn't happen in the future, to ensure that the waterways of the state are health and safety as well as our staff. And again, we're working with our consultant as well to develop and finalize that program. Once it's all finalized, hopefully by the end of the year, that's my goal, to push it. We will ensure, again, as with safety, that we push it up and down the chain and it gets buy-in from leadership all the way down.
Thank you for that response. Under the safety manager, I may have been, I'm just thinking back to that hearing, the recent budget hearing, did you guys get to make any additional hires that's going to be on that team? I know you spoke about the data, you reiterated it here as well, but did you guys get to make additional hires since then?
Yes, ma'am. We hired Andre Henderson as the manager for safety. And then we are in the final stages of some environmental regulatory compliance. What we have to do is obtain pins to be able to hire. And hiring in this industry as relates to water industry, people don't graduate with a safety degree or a degree in regulatory compliance. So really, being creative in recruiting, working with our colleagues in the different bureaus as well as the universities to really recruit and show that this is a career path to ensure that it's health and safety. So some things we've been working with, working with some of the industry in this space, posting things on their websites as well, and also just poaching. That's, you know, a real creative task to do. And so between my networks and especially Ms. Bowie's network, really trying to get people to really think about recruiting, I mean, working for DPW in this space. So hopefully, by the end of the year, I can be able to report more and more recruiting. But I can say that we hired a great safety manager. He's really looking at the program. And I just learned a couple of days ago that we are going to finalize, hopefully, an offer for an environmental regulatory compliance officer. But we're looking for a manager to manage the day-to-day for environmental regulatory compliance and then also staff up inspectors for safety.
I'm here for poaching. I support any, I support all of your efforts, Chief Bowie's efforts in recruiting people. I know that she played a big role in that safety manager position. I'm going to pivot and ask a question. It's regarding the 5% one-time water bill discount. Do we have a number of how many people, how many residents actually signed up for that paperless billing 5% one-time option?
Yes, I do have it. I don't have it in front of me, but I have it in my computer. I can get it to you.
Look, I'm going to be getting a lot of stuff for the committee, excuse me, is going to be getting a lot of information. So if you can include that too, I would, we will take it. I just want to know the number of customers who actually took advantage of it. Committee members, did you all have any other questions? Or we're good? Okay. I want to thank everybody for, oh, we got it right here. Thank you.
So we have 16,332 customers that enrolled in paperless billing. There was 5% discount was applied, we applied $70,767. And number of Baltimore City residents who benefited from the program was 14,133 residents.
I appreciate that. I want to thank everybody for joining today. We will continue to hold these quarterly legislative oversight hearings for both DPW and DOT that you all may have seen earlier. And right now, we're in recess. Have a great afternoon.